Alrighty, good afternoon folks. It is 5:30. I gave a little bit of time. Mr. Tillman is not here. Maybe he's in traffic. We have not heard from him, so hopefully he'll be here soon. We'll call this meeting to order 1.1, and we'll move on to 1.2, the Pledge of Allegiance. It'll be led virtually by Ms. Okuyama's 3rd grade class at Ramona Alessandro Elementary School, so let's please rise. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Fantastic job from our students in Ms. Okuyama's 3rd grade class at Ramona Alessandro Elementary School, as always with our students. We will now move on to 1.3, approval of the agenda.
Second.
It's been moved by Dr. Flores and second by Dr. Daddy Rogers. Any discussion on the agenda? Alrighty, motion carries for the agenda. We'll move on to 1.4, inspirational message, and tonight it's by Ms. Abigail Rosales Medina.
Thank you so much. I know many of us are, there's several things going on. We have graduations, which is an amazing thing, and just to see how proud our families are, our students are, for their accomplishments, as well as just knowing the fact that today's election day and how we can exercise our right to vote and hopefully improve the systems that we have locally, as well as the state and nationwide. But, one of the things that I definitely want to mention, and back in 2017, we had our own school shooting, and it affected us board members in many different ways. And I do want to give a moment of silence to the victims of Robb Elementary School, which is in Uvalde, Texas. Nineteen children and two teachers had passed, became victims. I also do want to give opportunity for board members if they do want to say anything regarding this. My heart goes out to all of their families, to all the victims, to all those impacted, to the small town of predominantly Latinos families. We cannot allow schools to fall victim to such atrocity again, and it seems like we hear these things, and you think it's going to be the last time, and we give our thoughts and prayers and prayers, and yet we're here again. So I do want to open it up if other board members wanted to make an additional comment before we take the moment of silence.
Dr. Daddy Rogers?
No, I, Barbara, Dr. Flores got her light quicker.
You were looking at me? I was looking at the light. Dr. Barbara Flores.
There you go.
Thank you, Ms. Medina. It is a horrible tragedy, mass killing. And we, as parents, as grandmothers, as board members, have to take action. Our hearts go out to the parents, to the community. I don't know how anybody recovers from this kind of devastation. It is horrific. And I, for one, think we should ban assault rifles. I think we should take action. I do believe in the Second Amendment. I do support it, but I think we have to have regulations on how people get guns, when they have them, if they're trained, et cetera. But I cried so much, I still, you know, the sorrow is deep. My colleagues in Austin, Texas, held a National Lulac, Day of Healing and Mourning Ceremony last Friday, and they, many people spoke, and of course, more revelations are coming out, and so, just sad, very sad, and very, you know, I don't know what to do, just feel the sadness, I guess. Thank you.
Dr. Flores.
All right, Dr. Daddy Rogers, thank you. Dr. Flores.
Thank you. And I too, just want to, death is never a good thing, and anyone that have to experience it in such a tragic way, I, my heart goes out to them. But I do also want to just thank all of our staff and attendees at our graduations that not only took the time to pause and remember and acknowledge those parents, but our own local losses we've had in, right here, where we touch and we feel and we see, have lost students in this tragic way a few weeks ago. And so, you know, we do have, as was mentioned, we do have at least some control locally to be able to engage and set the stage for those that may be struggling trying to figure it out, but it is my hope, I know I've talked to our board president because of the work that he does as well throughout the county, even though we're here in City Unified, but those students that are throughout the county are still connected to us, and when those losses happen, you know, we go home and we feel those same tragedies, and we have been talking about that for the last month, because soon after we had our tragedy, then there was that one, and I was like, you know, how do we bridge this together? But I think together, and through prayer and through working together as a community, we can begin to bring these awareness to those that are facing these tragedies, as well as look towards healing. And I just was speaking with, Dr. Rodriguez is going to be working on a presentation with our chief to engage in a conversation next month, so I'll make sure that that information gets out, because it is to bring awareness and how we can work together and heal through these tragedies. So, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Daddy Rogers and Ms. Sabios.
Thank you, Board President. Just kind of want to also echo, I don't think there's anything that I can really say that will, you know, even come close to saying anything that could really make a difference to those families that have lost their children, right? I can, I can only begin to imagine what it must feel like to lose a child. Just my deepest condolences for, for them, and you know, there's been other shootings, shootings since that shooting as well, you know, in other areas and parts of the country, as well as here in our own backyard. One of the things that I often think about when things like this happen, especially, you know, going to the Uvalde case, what was the person that did this thinking? You know, what was going through his mind? He was a young boy, really, barely 18 years old, and I just, I just hope that we here in our community can act to bring and provide mental health services, more so than ever before, especially with all of the extra funding that we are receiving to ensure that students that are in crisis, that are thinking about, you know, suicide, or thinking about harming other people, are able to receive help, the help that they need in a timely manner. So with that being said, you know, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sabios, and...
Wow, is all I can say. This is, there are, like my colleagues said, there are no words that can express the sorrow and condolences that we have for, for our colleagues. We've experienced it here ourselves, and as Dr. Daddy Rogers was talking about earlier, we, we sit on a couple committees together, and one's the Gangs and Drugs Task Force, that's the San Diego Countywide Task Force, and I believe we've, we've lost approximately 14 youth in our area, and I had told a few folks, a couple folks here know that the last funeral I went to for one of my students from county school was actually, was just one too many for me. I've seen a lot in my life, and this year, I will have to say, is more than I've ever seen, and it was just overwhelming in regards to my emotions and how I feel. So it is a call to action for all of us, that we have to do more. We're not doing enough, and I will agree with my colleagues here that we need to do more in regards to our mental health services, our social-emotional services, you know, for early identification, for treatment, to address bullying issues as much as we can, because that often leads to such violence. So yes, we can do more and we need to do more, and I know this board is committed to doing that, along with the Executive Cabinet and our superintendent in this community. It will take all of us, all of us, to minimize this. It will continue to happen, unfortunately, that's life, but we need to minimize it as much as we can, and that's going to take a community effort, you know, we call it a village, but it's going to be a lot more than a village, you know? It's going to be a call to action on a national level for us to be able to minimize this. So, thank you, Ms. Rosales Medina, for, for our condolences to them. We did send a letter from the district, just so you know, on behalf of the board and the school district, to them, you know, thank you, Dr. Flores and others who recommended that. I know it's, it's just a letter, but it means a lot from us because of what we've experienced, and, you know, I hope it means a little bit to them as well. Whew. So on that note, let's move on.
I'm going to take the moment of silence.
Oh, oh gosh, I'm sorry, Ms. Thank you, Mr. Rosales Medina. My apologies, my apologies.
No, no, you're fine. Just take a quick moment of silence.
Thank you so much.
I'll take a minute there, excuse me. Alrighty, we'll move on to 2.0, special presentations and recognitions. 2.1, resolution and recognition of Juneteenth, National Independence Day, and it is on Dr. Daddy Rogers this week.
Thank you. Resolution and recognition of Juneteenth, National Independence Day, whereas Juneteenth, or June 19th, marks the date in 1865, when Union soldiers arrived at the city of Galveston, Texas, to deliver General Order Number Three, officially ending slavery, more than two years after President Abraham Lincoln issued the Emancipation Proclamation. And whereas on June 17th, 2021, President Biden signed legislation declaring Juneteenth, National Independence Day, a federal holiday to be observed annually on June 19th, to commemorate the end of slavery in the United States, and whereas the San Bernardino County Board of Supervisors has declared Juneteenth to be a holiday in the county of San Bernardino. Therefore, be it resolved, the Board of Education of the San Bernardino City Unified School District hereby recognizes June 19th, 2022, as Juneteenth, National Independence Day, and urges people to join in celebrating Juneteenth as a day to honor and reflect on the significant role that African Americans have played in the history of the United States, and how they have enriched society through their steadfast commitment to promoting freedom, brotherhood, unity, and equality. So move.
Alright, it's been moved and properly second. Any discussion?
Yes.
Dr. Flores.
I brought this book, The True Story of the Grandmother of Juneteenth, Opal Lee, and What It Means to Be Free. It's a children's book. You all know that I love children's books. I think our kids would benefit, you know, by having this in their libraries, and it, I'm just going to read the last, the back part, says, "Freedom, Hope, and Joy Divine. Juneteenth Means It's Freedom Time." Grandmother of Juneteenth, Opal Lee, spent decades urging all people to recognize Juneteenth, a holiday celebrating when news of black freedom from slavery came to Texas. Discover Opal Lee's moving story and learn about the, this important historic event and the holiday's full message: Freedom is for everyone.
Excellent.
It's a beautiful book, and it's illustrated by Katara A. Bobo, a bestselling illustrator, and the words are by Alice Fay Duncan.
She was amazing, and we want to add to, just, just to that, is our efforts passing the Juneteenth when we did, when others had not followed by, and I think the city, if they haven't, is coming up. But out of that also came effort to push for the holiday, and then ultimately now, there is a, going to be a San Bernardino Juneteenth Committee, and there's this big event that's coming out, and even though our hopes was everyone, one event, but there's going to be three, but there is one big one that we've all been invited to. I know they reached out for tables and things like that, because they want to do exactly that. Dr. Flores, education as well at the forefront of it, so we'll make sure that those dates are out, but I know a number of them, I'm going to attend as many as I can, but they do want us to bring some resources, so that's great.
Thank you, Dr. Flores, thank you, Dr. Daddy Rogers, Ms. Rosales Medina.
And I do, I do want to add that, you know, I feel that we need to do more in education to help really have our students understand, our parents understand, when you look at, you know, Independence Day, the reality is that not everyone was free, yet we celebrate that, you know, in a big way, which is great, but we also have to celebrate June 19th in a big way, because the reality is, this is the true, I feel, the independence, the Day of Freedom, that includes everyone. So you can't celebrate necessarily freedom if it only pertains to a small percentage of people, when in this, in reality, was the one that it's enabled everyone to be free. So I just wanted to acknowledge, and we need to do more in the education system to, to educate our students about this as well.
Thank you, Ms. Rosales Medina, and Dr. Flores, you always find wonderful books and interesting books to read. I'd like to see that one myself sometime too, if you don't mind sharing. We could maybe take turns reading it. Alrighty, 3.0, public comments. 3.1, receive public comments, and give me a second here so I can read this. "This is the only time to puck. We'll have an opportunity to address the board on items not on the agenda and within their subject matter jurisdiction, such as district policies, procedures, programs, services, or fiscal matters. Public comments are limited to five minutes per person. Six or more people who wish to speak on one topic will be provided, no more than 30 minutes total. Speakers are cautioned that, under California law, no person is immune from liability for making intentionally false or defamatory comments regarding any person simply because these comments were made at a public meeting." Alright, Ms. Nicole, do we have any public comments?
Dr. Wyatt, we still need to vote on the resolution.
Oh, my goodness.
I apologize, thank you.
That was very good. You caught us, we got caught up in so much discussion, that it was moved and properly seconded, and did you get who that was moved and properly seconded by?
Yes, I seconded. Yes, thank you.
Alrighty, well, thank you for that robust discussion, because you totally threw me right off, folks, no, I'm just kidding. Alright, we'll go ahead and take a vote, please. Thank you, Nicole. Alrighty, motion carries. Thank you, everyone, and I apologize, and we will go back now to 3.1, receive public comments.
I'm sorry, we have one public comment.
Alrighty, our first public comment is Ms. Gina, and is it Mireles? Mireles? Mireles, Mireles, thank you. I always want to practice, thank you. Welcome.
First, I want to thank San Bernardino City Unified School District. I worked 10 years for the Etowahda School District, and I can state that I worked for the most racist school district in San Bernardino County. My experience was very negative. I was a victim of wage theft, with the unconditional support of a Caucasian superintendent. And the aggressor, the person that misappropriately used the public funds, was a black woman, Janelle Amirix. So, my interpretation of a school district, the way I view a school board, is based on my experience with the Etowahda School District. Teaching is a privilege. I was never given that privilege in Etowahda School District. I was given that privilege here in San Bernardino City Unified School District. And after being unhappy for a very long time, I was happy in February of 2020, when the pandemic hit, because I had the privilege of substitute teaching at Lincoln Elementary under Raul Velasco. And I had fun working with special day class students, although my favorite grade level is K through 3rd bilingual education. Every time I'm in a bilingual 3rd grade class, I learn something, because being the smart aleck that I am, I did not take Spanish 3 in college, I took Spanish 5, so I barely passed literature with a C. But today, I'm here to announce the Gloria Limón Project, and with the unconditional support of the Justice Department, San Bernardino County Deputy District Attorney's Office, and the Mexican Mafia. In 2016, I was interviewed by a member of the Mexican Mafia, and I was validated as an expert in the field of education. He asked me, "What happened to you when you worked?" What, he asked me, "What did the Etowahda School District do to you?", and I explained to him my experience. Not only do we lose children in horrible situations like we had, where we lose children, and God takes these precious gifts away, we also lose them to the judicial system. And in the state of California, the largest minority in the penal system, from Folsom to Calipatria, it's our young Latino males, soon to be followed by the, by the young Latinas. Gloria Feliz Limón, the Gloria Limón Project, isn't about Gloria Limón. This project, I intended to start back in 2010, when I went looking for Gloria Limón, thinking she was like her mom, with two or three kids doing hair. Her father was a black angel, and her mother was a stay-at-home mom. When I went looking for Gloria at her grandmother's house, I was told her sister lived up the street, so I went to go see her sister, Dolores, and then Dolores told me, I asked Dolores, "Well, where's Gloria?", and that's when Dolores told me, "Gloria's at the Twin Towers, she's looking at life." Expelled from the Alta Loma School District as a freshman for getting into three fights. Chafé Joint Unified did not follow protocol, did not, did not do a child study team to find out why this young Latina was so angry at the age of 14. Gloria was sentenced to life in 2010, and I have visited Gloria, and that's how this project, my mission back in 2010, received the name of Gloria Limón. And it was really sad when I went the following day to the Twin Towers, and there were five Latinas at the visiting window of the Twin Towers, and I walked up to their, up to her, up to them, to these girls, and I said, "I'm looking for Gloria Limón", and Gloria said, "I'm Gloria Limón." I said, "I'm your Aunt Gina", and she started crying, we started crying, because I was there too late, and she apologized, and she apologized, but at the end of the day, it wasn't her fault. It was the principal at Alta Loma High School, the same man, where, the same location, where the only ratified of the Mexican Mafia among the Kokamanga Kings was expelled. So now the black angels and the Kokamanga Kings are going to come together for the first time in history in San Bernardino County, and we're going to send President Biden a large message, because a woman that should have been Vice President is Hilda Solis. And we need to demand respect, because we are tired of the racism and the discrimination, both in the workplace and in the education system. Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, our next public speaker is Ann Martinez. Welcome. Are you, are you guys speaking as a group? Alright, and then, so we'll start the clock on each one as they start, okay? And so this is Angel?
Yes.
Alright, and then who's going to be next?
Yeah.
Alright, alright, Angel, welcome.
Great.
I like the shirt, actually, it looks very familiar.
Thank you. Hello, my name is Angel Rusko, my pronouns are he/him, and I'm a student at Sanji. I am also a youth organizer with ICUC. I'm here today to follow, as a follow-up for Students for Wellness Centers event on April 30th. At our event, we had a dialogue with school board members, Scott Wyatt, school board member, Abigail Medina, and Myers Sabios, and Student Wellness and Support Services Director, Colleen Williams, about the importance in expanding wellness centers across the school district. In front of the audience, who are approximately 80 people, ICUC leaders presented research around our struggles as students trying to access mental health resources on our school campuses. We also gave context about some of the history of our ongoing campaign and continued push for a school-based health centers. As part of our research, we learned about our wellness centers at Sierra High School, and got a budget breakdown from Principal Hector Morita, which we used to create an educated budget estimate of how much funding we believe the school district needs to allocate towards the development and implementation of school-based health centers on every high school campus. In dialogue with our invited school board members, we received comments, commitments from you. One, on working in partnership with, with us as students and shareholders in the continued conversations leading to the future establishment of wellness centers. And two, on focusing resources to a case study extract and share the learning that has been taking place through Sierra High School's wellness centers, in order to implement something similar across other high schools in SBCUSD. And three, advocating to allocate the 6.1 carryover equity dollars for the creation of more school-based health centers for the upcoming school year of 2022 to 2023 school year. Through the conversation, we learned about SBCUSD's plan to roll out the establishment of the wellness centers starting 2024 to 2025. As student leaders at schools across the district, we are invested and continue to the part of decisions-making process and bridging the student voice to... and continue to the part of decisions-making process and bridging the student voice to develop these centers. Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, and our next speaker will be Ann Martinez. Welcome, Ann.
Hello, my name is Ann Martinez. I use she/her pronouns. I'm an incoming senior at San Bernardino High School and a youth leader with ICUC. As part of the conversation that we had with school board president Scott Wyatt and school board members Abigail Medina and Myra Sabios at our Student for Wellness Center event in April, we asked about any opportunities that may be available so students can participate in the conversations happening at SBCUSD towards the implementation of school-based health centers. Both school board president Scott Wyatt and school board member Myra Sabios mentioned advocating for the reimplementation of the student school board member position. As youth leaders, we believe it is important to have student representation at the decision-making table. Yet, there are very few opportunities for us to give informed input on issues that affect us firsthand. We believe that it would be beneficial to bring back the student school board members' position, but we wonder how much say these students actually have in the decision-making process. If these positions were brought back, would they actually hold any power, or would the student school board members simply act as a token for the school board to say that they are listening to student input? As youth that are heavily invested in the dialogue happening around mental wellness resource accessibility for students, we want to uplift the Student Wellness and Support Service Department for actually sitting down with us and viewing us as the experts of our experiences through these conversations. How are you as school board members elected to represent our best interest as students? Doing your part to ensure that we are centered in this decision-making process and that student's input is taken seriously as we make informed suggestions that would move us towards creating accessibility for the mental health resources we deserve to have ready available on our school campuses. What steps need to be taken in order to make that student school board member position a reality?
Thank you very much, Ann. Alright, and our next public speaker, and I hope, is it a P? Is it Leonardo Penalosa?
Yes, Leonardo Penalosa.
Gotcha. Thank you. Welcome.
Hello, Board. As just mentioned, my name is Leonardo Penalosa, and I'm an incoming senior at San Bernardino High School and a youth leader with ICUC. At our Students for Wellness event on April 30th, we received commitments from Board President Wyatt, Board Member Medina, to allocate 6.1 million in carryover equity dollars for the creation of more member, carryover equity dollars for the creation of more school-based health centers for the upcoming 2022-2023 school year. We want to commend Board Member Medina for advocating for the allocation of money towards the expansion of the wellness centers, which she had stated should be one of the district's top 10 priorities. In 2020, we advocated for the allocation of SER II and SER III funding towards the development of wellness facilities. We received pushback on this because it is one-time funding. Yet, from the look at the LCAP, the school district has approximately 219 million of this money left unspent. Through our research, we learned that the school district can request preapproval from the federal government to use SER II and SER III funding for construction projects which could be channeled to bring existing facilities up to code. According to Section 18003 of the CARES Act, a local education agency that receives funds under this title may also use them for providing mental health services and supports. This means that SER II and SER III funding could be used as a one-time allocation towards the development of wellness-centered facilities. This one-time funding would be put to great use towards the creation of facilities since it isn't a need-recurring expense. In conversation with the Student Wellness Support Services Department, we learned that there is a projected timeline for the 2024-2025 school year. Through their advocacy, the Swiss department is working towards applying for grants and looking at different revenue sources that would channel money to SBCUSD mental budget allocation. While we are grateful for all the work that the Swiss department is doing to ensure there is funding coming into the district for school mental health, we question why we have to look for this funding through grants outside of the district when there is currently unaccounted for funding already within the district. Again, we think the timeline that has been created by the Swiss department, but the need is already here. Our recommendations are as follows. Number one would be to allocate additional funding that isn't already accounted for from the SER II and SER III funding for the expansion of wellness center facilities for the 2022 and 2023 school year. And then during the August board revision, amend the LCAP with final surplus numbers and a wellness center action that is fully funded. Thank you again.
Thank you, Leonardo. And we do have, it looks like, a question by Dr. Doughty Rogers.
Thank you, and thank you all for your presentation. My question, I have two questions. The first one, are any of you all on the Slack committee?
I believe we are not.
Okay. And that's, that's part of the conversation that we had before to coordinate our efforts for our youth. So, that's something we have to look at. And then secondly, was the discussion, did anyone mention to you all our wellness teams? Are you aware of our wellness teams?
No, I believe we're not. We are aware of the Wellness Advisory, which is held by one of our invitees. I don't see her in the room.
Okay.
Colleen, there we go.
Swiss Department Director.
The Swiss Department. And, and so you are not aware of the wellness teams that currently exist throughout the district? That, that wasn't mentioned to you at all?
No, we're not.
Okay. Alright, thank you so much. Thank you all for your presentation. And it's just another reminder, and I just so happened to talk to Dr. Rodriguez about this, we have to make sure that our students and our community are aware. I know that I brought up the teams somewhere early on in the midst of COVID. And, but if they exist, we have to explain so that our students know. Because if they are not aware, then they don't know how to access them, therefore, they don't exist. Because there is a difference between the actual building, which is a lot of money, much more than we even have now, as opposed to those teams. So, I want to just clear that up, and hopefully, we can meet with us. I know you're seeing, I think you all are still going to be with us. So, we need to clear that up, and we need to coordinate the efforts with the Slack, who is also doing amazing work as well. But it seems like some are advocating on this side, some are, and then we, when we meet as board members, we need to share that with you all. And I know when I've met with you before, we talked about the teams. But if you still don't know that the teams exist, that's not good for us either, because they do exist. So, thank you all for reminding us again.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Doughty Rogers. Ms. Razaz Medina?
Thank you for your presentation. It was insightful to see all the youth, and they actually presented the budget piece. It was well-prepared. So, I want to say congratulations to you all for doing such an amazing job in really presenting that. I wanted to clarify, only because I know that I had spoken with regards to not being included in some of these committees. And, and I think that was their frustration, is that they have been always invited and included. So, you mentioned, I just want to clarify, Slack, is that within the school district, or is that an outside?
That is a presentation that we had the other week, that the students that came before us that's doing the advocacy. What is the actual name? I didn't want to.
Superintendent's, or it's the Student Leadership Advisory Committee.
But it's a different group. So, the thing is that, like you mentioned, there's so many things going on that I feel like certain groups are, you know, are not being involved, are not, are not invited. So, anyways, I'll just clarify with that, that if, if there are any questions, then please, you know, let us know, so that way we can try to make sure that you're all involved in that process. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Razaz Medina. Dr. Flores?
Thank you guys for coming. You're great advocates. You do your homework, and that's important. And I'm really, you know, very thrilled to see that you went into the budget and also policy. And the fact that you're here says we're not doing enough, correct? Okay. And what I understand is you're advocating for health and wellness centers at all our high schools and our middle schools, correct? Okay. And you do, you stated that you knew about Sierra's Health and Wellness Center. Have you toured it? Do you guys, have you guys gone to it and toured it?
Yes, I believe some of us have had the opportunity to walk around and see the facilities.
Okay. And so you see that it, it's fully functioning, and it, and is very successful with our students. And that's a model that we have. And I'm very proud of that model because it is serving the needs of the students, the families. And it's, of course, won a lot of awards, right? And so I, I, I think that we have a model for the rest of our district. And I do believe that you as students should be included in the advisory board because it obviously shows that you do your homework, and you know what's going on. And I would advocate for you to insist that you be on those committees and give voice. And I, you are just five representatives, but I'm sure there's representatives from all the different schools, correct?
Yes.
So, I want to thank you again, and just keep it up. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Flores. Ms. Sabios?
Oh, I also just want to commend you, and I want to actually thank you for coming out here and reminding us. Because as you know, there's a lot of things that are happening in the district. No excuse, right? But sometimes we need reminders. And so, thank you for coming out and reminding us. I, I did have a question. I know that there are certain things that you particularly read about, like some codes and things like that. If maybe you can email me?
Yes.
Like a copy of that, so that I can, you know, kind of look over it as well. I would really appreciate that. I think that it is a great idea to bring back those student board member positions that we were talking about. I remember that we discussed when we met with you all that it would actually be a nice thing to have seven, you know, kind of one per board member. That was something that Mr., Dr. Scott Wyatt had mentioned, that I absolutely loved the idea, because it gives even more opportunity, right? And also, it gives you guys the experience to directly work alongside a board member and kind of see a little bit more of our roles and kind of what we do day in and day out. So, again, thank you so much. And I, we haven't forgotten. I haven't forgotten.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sabios. And thank you again, team, for coming out today. Great seeing you again in those lovely shirts. Just saying, I have worn mine already proudly. And, you know, we are looking forward to getting student board members back, especially to work with them, as Ms. Sabios said, like on a one-on-one basis. Because the mentoring and coaching goes back and forth, right? Because again, you shared so much great information with us when we met with you. And I'll tell you, I really felt it tremendously in my heart. And since, ever since I came on the board, what you're talking about has been a top priority for us. And I will ask you this, if you have time later. If not, then take a look at maybe the minutes sort of video that we'll be selecting and talking about our top 10. And I'm pretty sure that's probably going to be in there towards the top. Yeah, just so you know. Yeah, I think it's at the top already. So, I just wanted to encourage you to keep doing what you're doing. We need your support as well, and we definitely value your input and your testimonials. It means the world to us. Thank you. Alrighty, we will move on to 4.0 closed session, 4.1. Oh, I'm sorry. Ms. Nicole, is there any other public comments before I move on?
No, there are not.
Alright, thank you very much. 4.0 closed session, 4.1 closed session, public comments?
No public comments.
There are not? Alright, at 4.2 closed session agenda, at this time, we will convene to closed session. Alrighty, folks. Well, welcome back. And I am so happy to still see people still out there. Thank you for being beyond patient with us. And we're going to move on, hopefully, to some good news now. And I see folks still out there in the crowd. So, thank you for staying here, because I think it's going to be worth it. We'll move on to 5.1, approval of adult school principal. Be it resolved that the Board of Education approved the appointment of the following employee, Raw Pedraza Jr., Adult School Principal, Inland Career Education Center, effective date, work year, and salary to be determined, funding 501.
So moved.
It's been moved by Dr. Fuller and seconded by Ms. Sabios. Any discussion? Let's go ahead and vote. Alright, motion carries, 5.0. And Mr. Pedraza, are you here? Which I think I know you are.
Congratulations.
You deserve a lot more than that for being that patient. But welcome to the admin world of patience. That's what it's going to take. I'm just kidding. Small taste, right? Alright, 5.2, approval of middle school vice principal. Let me click on that. Be it resolved that the Board of Education approved the appointment of the following employee, Augustine Zavala, Middle School Vice Principal, Arrow View, effective date, work year, and salary to be determined, funding source 035.
So moved.
It's been moved and properly seconded by Dr. Doughty Rogers. Any discussion? Okay, let's vote. Alright, motion carries. And I believe Mrs. Zavala is here as well, correct? Alright, please be acknowledged. Welcome to the admin team. Alright, 5.3, approval of middle school vice principal. Be it resolved that the Board of Education approved the appointment of the following employee, Edward McMillan, Middle School Vice Principal, Del Vallejo, effective date, work year, and salary to be determined, funding source 035.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. Any discussion? Alright, let's vote. Alright, motion carries. Mr. McMillan here. Alright, welcome. Great to see you.
Welcome back.
Oh, I'm sorry. Welcome back. Even better. Alright, approval of coordinator, positive youth development. I'm looking around. Okay. Be it resolved that the Board of Education approved the appointment of the following employee, Robert Moss, Coordinator, Positive Youth Development, effective date, work year, and salary to be determined, funding source 060.
So moved.
It's been moved and properly seconded. Any discussion? Alright, let's vote. Alright, motion carries. Congratulations, Dr. Moss. I don't see him here unless he's hanging out somewhere. Is he here?
He was here earlier. Looks like he left.
Alright, hey, I don't blame you, buddy. But congratulations, Dr. Moss. And if any of you guys, the rest of you guys are doctors, I apologize because I just don't know. But I always like to make sure I acknowledge that. Alright, I believe that is it for the appointments. We'll move on to 5.5. And congratulations to all new administrators, and thank you for hanging in there with us. 5.5 expulsion of students. Be it resolved, the Board of Education accepts and adopts the recommendation and findings of the hearing panel based on a review of the panel's findings, the facts, and recommendations, and orders expulsion of the following students with identification numbers as listed below in accordance with the board rules and regulations in compliance with Education Code 48900.
So moved reluctantly.
Second.
Been moved and woefully seconded.
Reluctantly.
Any discussion? I will just say in my discussion, yes, it is hard to see this many expulsions at this point of the year. And it kind of substantiates our many discussions about needing to do more in regards to mental health and other means of corrections and intervention. Any other discussions? Alright, let's vote. Alright, motion carries. We'll move on to 5.6. Be it resolved, the Board of Education, oops, sorry, my screen just jumped on. Board of Education approves- Board of Education approves the following students were recommended for expulsion, but expulsion is deemed inappropriate based on due process errors, insufficient evidence and/or availability of other means of corrections in compliance with the Education Code Section 48900. Therefore, although they were recommended for expulsion, expulsion is not granted.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded, any discussion? Let's vote. Alright, motion carries. Moving on to 5.7. Students recommended for expulsion but terminated and students served discipline due to completion of youth court, availability of other means of corrections and/or due process errors. Be it resolved, the Board of Education approves the following students were recommended for expulsion, but expulsion is deemed inappropriate based on due process errors, insufficient evidence and/or availability of other means of correction in compliance with the Education Code Section 48900. Therefore, although they were recommended for expulsion, expulsion is not granted.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded, any discussion? Alright, let's vote. Alright, motion carries. Moving on to 5.8, other closed session action. Alright, be it resolved, the Board of Education accepts a notice of recommendation for disciplinary action statement of charges to dismiss the following classified employee from his or her employment with the district, HR class 21-22-16-ER.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded, any discussion? Alright, let's vote. Alright, motion carries. We also have a second item to report on. The district and La Iglesia de Dios Vivo have reached an agreement on the settlement of litigation and the sale of the property from the church to the district.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded, any discussion? Alright, let's vote. Alright, motion carries. We'll move on to 7.0. Oh, I'm sorry, 6.1, 6.0 public hearings. 6.1 fiscal year 2022-2023 preliminary budget. Alright. I will now open 6.0, I will now open a public hearing.
Dr. Wyatt, if I may?
Yes, you may.
So thank you, Dr. Board President, Dr. Wyatt, board members, cabinet. I just wanted to provide a little additional information for this public hearing for the board and the public. So last week, the district staff presented information to the board on the 2023, 223 budget and LCAP plan for the district. And this evening, we just wanted to provide the board with a little additional information for their review. And that is included in the slide deck that was in front of your, your seats at the dais. In that information, that provides updates related to the state and, I'm sorry, the state senate and assemblies budget agreement that was reached last week. I'll just briefly go through some of those details. This is in contrast to the information that was presented last week that came from the governor's May revision. So just some basic information. The senate and assembly, through a joint committee agreement, have agreed to increase the LCFF base by 16.2%. That is a little, that's quite a bit more than the governor proposed in his May revision, which was at 9.85%. And this comes to us in forms of ongoing funding. In addition, the legislature also agreed with the governor in, for, to provide districts with local discretionary one-time funds. However, the, the state legislature has provided an additional half a billion dollars on top of what the governor proposed at $8 billion. With all that said, this, this, along with the governor's May revise, this speaks very well for education funding in California. The one important note that was absent from the state senate and assemblies joint proposal was the one-time or the 2021-22 ADA projections. What that was designed to do through the governor's proposal was districts who experienced dramatic ADA decreases this year due to reopening during the COVID pandemic would be, would have their ADA rate based on the 1920 levels. And this would assist districts in their funding for the subsequent year in 2223 by averaging using a more reflective number of district ADA. This is absent. This is the second time this has not been included in the legislature's proposal. We are advocating on behalf of our district and districts across the state for this to be included in the legislature's proposal. For a district like San Bernardino, our ADA rate decreased by 9%. If this measure goes into effect, this would be, result in an additional $18 million to the district. So with that, that's just the, just some updates. The additional information is included in the slide deck that provided to the board. What I will note is that we've posted the budget in accordance with the public hearing guidelines as well as the information for the general fund, unrestricted and combined general fund meet the requirements for the 2022-23 budget year and the two subsequent years so that we will be able to have an approved budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Solon, Dr. Flores.
Mr. Solon, is, I, just for clarification, the, I read today in a source that the governor's budget and the legislature, legislature's budget was going to decrease education, the education funds. Did you read that?
I, I have not seen that. What I'm hearing is that the governor's actually, from a, from a proposal standpoint, really represents the floor for education funding. The legislature's is much higher. And so over the next, actually, the next few weeks, the legislature and the governor will continue to propose, to negotiate to identify what they, what they plan to do. However, I have not heard that education funding will be decreased.
Well, for public education.
For public.
For K-12. And they want to shift the money to, to higher ed. But anyway, they're debating it. So, but I wanted to ask, is the June 15th the, the bottom line for the budget? Or will they still be negotiating till the end of June?
Great question. So the statutory deadline for the legislature is June 15th. However, just as they did last year, the, the legislature passed what we consider a shell budget last year. And they continued negotiations throughout the year. And we didn't actually get final budget trailer bills until August. So, yeah.
But so that's probably what will happen.
It's ongoing, yes.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Alrighty, thank you for that question and clarification. Are there any public comments, Nicole?
No, there are not.
Alright, any other discussion? I will now close this public hearing. We'll move on to 6.2. Alright, 6.2. I got a little bit of reading here, so please be patient with me. I'll now open 6.2 public hearing for local control and accountability plan. First, are there any public comments?
There are not.
Alrighty, and then I believe this one, is this Ms. Applegate? Oh, I'm sorry, who?
Good evening, Dr. Wyatt.
Oh, I am, you're right in front of me.
I snuck up here, sorry about that.
That was real good.
Good evening, Board President, Dr. Wyatt, Board Vice President, Mr. Tillman, School Board Members, Superintendent and Cabinet. Thank you for the opportunity to present tonight. Tonight pursuant to the provisions of EDCO, the district shall hold at least one public hearing to solicit recommendations and comments of the members, of the, I'm sorry, of members of the public regarding the specific actions and expenditures proposed in the LCAP. On June 2nd, the draft of the LCAP was posted in English and Spanish online. And a hard copy was placed at the education, the Board of Education reception desk. Parent square messages were sent to all educational partners beginning on June 2nd regarding the availability of the document, where to provide input, and information about the public hearing tonight. A message was also placed on the district's website, a splash screen that shared that same information to those that visited the website. Lastly, we sent email notifications to our parent advisory groups with this important information. Although the LCAP is effective for a period of three years, it must be updated on or before July 1st of each year. To date, the district has provided multiple opportunities over 24 meetings for community and educational partner engagement. Throughout the process of educational partner review and comment, the district collected valuable input to ensure the annual update reflects the vision and recommendation of educational partners. The draft was presented to our Student Leadership Advisory Council on May 23rd, the Superintendent's Parent Advisory Committee on May 23rd, the District English Learner Parent Advisory Committee, or D-LAC, on May 24th. And we further consulted with our SLPA on May 24th. We notified members of the public to submit written comments regarding the LCAP on April 12th, May 5th, and again on June 2nd. Tonight, you have the budget overview for parents, the 21-22 supplement to the annual update, the LCAP action tables for 21-22 and 22-23, and the instructions, which are the documents included in tonight's public hearing. You've also received a board, a board packet in a blue file folder that includes additional information about the educational partner engagement, the goals, metrics, actions, and next steps. Behind those pages is a summary of the new investments, a breakdown of personnel versus goods and services, a copy of the at-a-glance funding sheet that you received last Tuesday. And a table of contents was created for the LCAP. Includes a little QR code if you'd like to view the digital version. Lastly, you received a detailed metric report from Dr. Cleveland's office in assessment and accountability that includes LCAP metrics and data for all of our student groups.
You're looking for your button, I'm looking for my mic. Dr. Flores.
I just wanted to clarify. So basically what you presented last week for us, it's right here. But in more detail.
Right, it's now in the full plan version.
I, I want you to know I read everything. And it was, it was a really incredible, incredible feat from all of the team. I just want to commend you for being so thorough. And I, I read everything.
How many pages was that, Dr. Flores?
125 pages.
Awesome, that's a short condensed version.
Yeah, that is. But anyway, I really appreciated it. And thank you so much.
Thank you. Yes, over the years, the template has gotten shorter, thankfully.
Any other comments from board members? Alright, board, this, the vote will vote on the LCAP, I believe, at the next meeting, correct?
Correct, it'll come for adoption on June 21st.
Outstanding, and thank you very much. I will now close this public hearing. Alright, 6.3, balances in excess of minimum reserve requirements fiscal year 2021 through 2022. I will now open the 6.3 public hearing. And I just read that, so bang, gavel, sure. I'm going to get this down one of these times. Are there any public comments?
There are not.
Alrighty, any presentation? No, even better. I will now close this public hearing. There's no vote. 6.4. I'll now open the 6.4 public hearing and adoption for the MOU between the Samuel City Unified School District and CSEA, Chapter 183, vacation payout. Are there any public comments?
Not, no, sorry.
Thank you. Any presentations? Alrighty. I will now close this public hearing.
Don't we have to vote?
I still close first. I still close first.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, that's alright. Trust me, I would think that was right anyway. Be it resolved, the Board of Education adopts a memorandum of understanding between the California School Employee Association and its Samuel, Chapter 183, and the Samuel City Unified School District for the vacation payout effective June 30th, 2022.
So moved, second.
Alright, that was like a tie, so we'll go with, it's been moved by Dr. Daddy Rogers, second by Dr. Flores. Any discussion? Mr. Tillman, you came in a dismal third. Alright, we'll go ahead and vote. Alrighty, motion carries. Thank you. 7.0, reports by union organizations. We'll start with 7.1, Samuel Teachers Association. Ms. Nicole?
No one is present.
Okay, sometimes they come in virtually. 7.2, California School Employee Association.
There are no comments.
No report. 7.3, Communication Workers of America.
No report.
Going for 4 for 4. 7.4, Samuel School Police Officers Association.
No report.
Alrighty, moving on to 8.0, reports and presentations. 8.1, citizen oversight, oh, I think they were.
So if it, if it permits, Dr. Wyatt, the, both presentations, all presenters have gone. And so we will not have presentations this evening. We will postpone them to another.
Table to a, is that new consensus of the board? Are we good on that, or? Alrighty, thank you very much, Mr. Solon. We will move 8.1 and 8.2 to a board meeting at a later date and time. 9.0, board discussion. Ooh, boy, this one, I've been looking for for a long time. Dr. Flores, you didn't let me finish. Alright, 9.1, board top 10. You should, excuse me for making a little noise. You should have a handout in front of you. For those of you that are familiar with the process, we're going to go over it real quickly anyway because Ms. Sevales has not done this, I believe. And so, Dr. Flores, did you want to make a comment before I talked about this? Or you want me to talk about it first?
Well, I just wanted to recommend that maybe we, it's the first time we've seen them. And, you know, maybe a process of how we prioritize them so that we can then come back to.
Absolutely, I love that idea.
To come back and discuss some next.
Ms. Razaz Medina.
So I was actually, so what I actually did myself, I just circled my top 10. And then give it, maybe we can give it to.
A 1 through 10?
1 through 10, you circle it, and then we can.
10 favorite or 10 lowest?
Well, no, I just circle 10, period. But do you, should we do that?
We should give it a point value so we could get weighted response. That's what we've done before. So we have to determine if your number one choice is a 1 or is your number one choice a 10.
Okay. Do you want us to quickly?
I think we need to determine that as a board right now. So let's say we all pick number one as our choice, right? And we said if we gave it a 1 value, it would have a 6 vote, meaning the low value is high, number one. Or if we give it a 10 value, it'd be 60, right? So we need to determine what our, our top pick, number one, is either worth 1 point or 10 points.
Lowest number is going to be the top priority.
If we choose that.
And can I suggest that, just as she was able to get the information from us, we take this and tally it and then.
Homework?
Email it into her.
Absolutely.
Scan it in and take a picture.
Alrighty.
I just want to clarify, Ms. Sevales is okay with that? Or do you want us to review it and read it one by one, just really quickly? Is that something that you want?
Well, actually, thank you for asking. I'm not sure how it was done before. So I submitted in my. I submitted in my top, you know, 5, or whatever it was, and each one of us did so, so now the question is being asked for us to select 10 that we would like to prioritize, giving it from 1 to 10. Yeah, I think taking these and having time to kind of look through them, and then send them in would be a good idea.
Dr. Daddy Rogers?
Just wanted to add to that, that some of them are, can be duplicated, put in, like I started looking at them going, there's some that are in there that really can go into wellness, and, you know, some can go, duplicate into pathways, so when you're doing your top 10, look, look and see, you know, how they move up, because they already have kind of weighted, and some of them, like wellness, obviously, but there's more spaces, so, but, to be clear, on the top 10, because I heard Mr. Tillman say something about the lowest number, now which way, are we ranking them, one, like my favorite, my...
I think a number one, our favorite, that would make sense, right, our number one, so the lowest number would, the lowest number added up from all of us, the number ones would get that.
Okay, but still, 1, 2, 3...
Yeah, because number one might be number one for me, it might be number 2 for Ms. Rozas, might be number 3 for Dr. Flores, that'd be a 6, yeah, to your number one.
Okay.
And then your second choice would be number 2, your third choice would be number 3, and so on, and the lowest number tallied between the 6 of us would be the, you know, in that order, 1 through 10 would be our top 10.
If we're done tonight, maybe we just might as well just give it to them?
Yes, you may definitely give it to Ms. Nicole or Ms. Katrina, that would be fine, if not, and you want to take it home and look at it, that'd be great. Alrighty, any other discussion on this? Folks, I will say, great list, actually, I didn't know how long it'd be, 24 items, that's a good job of, and you know what I love about it, I see a couple on it that we might have talked about before, and a lot of new ones, so like I said, with the group, that we've made a lot of progress in the last couple of years, because those top 10s have really fallen off the list, and we have new ones, so, great job to our staff and everybody out there getting that done. Alrighty, let's move on to one of our favorite sections, and we had a talk about this, Mr. Vice President Tillman, you weren't here earlier, but we're gonna keep our comments brief, hopefully you can do the same. So, 10.0, Reports and Comments, 10.1, Board Members, and let me see who we're starting with today, oh, Dr. Daddy Rogers got to go twice today, and then we'll move from you to us.
Really, okay, so, we've already been told, we all went to graduations, but we did enjoy them, I just do want to mention that, and then there's just two things I will make mention. AB 2774, I don't know if that's been brought to our attention, but I'm bringing these up because these are some that I would like for us to consider, doing letters of support. What AB 2774 is doing now, it is adding the African-American students to the LCAP, and, you know, to increase that funding, this had came before from Shirley Weber, and it's coming back, actually, her daughter is now leading that, and I had a chance to talk with Senator Leva, who's also supporting it from the education perspective, and so it would be good if we can consider that. Also, AB 22933, which is O'Donnell's bill, there's 2 that's on there for transportation, and he is supporting, it has a funding, the mandate on the funding for transportation, and I know that this is gonna be major to us, and so if we can also look into that as well, to see if we could do support on those 2 bills. Thank you, those are my comments.
Thank you, Dr. Daddy Rogers, that was 1 minute and 7 seconds, so hopefully somebody else can beat that. Ms. Rozas Medina.
Yes, no, thank you, I do want to, again, acknowledge our high school graduates, but I did, over the weekend, get, did get a notification that was a little concerning, because I thought we had a conversation regarding the caps, the graduation caps, and apparently there was a student who, her cap was taken away, she had a picture of 2 family members that had passed, and she had flowers all around it, and was, you know, attributing, you know, her reason for graduating was her family's support, and the fact that it was taken away. I know there's certain rules, and, you know, what you can or cannot place on them, but I really do feel like, we really have to look at this, I mean, if it doesn't have any negative content, why not allow our students to express themselves? Many may not necessarily go to college, so this is something extremely important for them, the high school diploma, they may be the first one in their families to graduate, so I really do want to make sure that all our sites, and what are we actually doing? Maybe we can get a brief update with our school sites, are there certain school sites that are completely ensuring that no students have any decorations at all, and if that's the case, what's the reasoning? I'm curious, what is the reasoning? And, you know, like I said, many of our students and families, they create these art, it's an art form, you know, if you see them, they're really artistic, and so, in this particular case, I won't say necessarily the school site, and I know I did thank Dr. Wyatt, our President, because I did share with him the information, and it's unfortunate, and the student has not received it yet, I know from the weekend that I heard that she had not received her cap back, so I really want to look at a common practice that we can have across the district, that we want to, we don't want to punish our students if it's not inappropriate, so, I do request that the district really look at this for the upcoming graduation, there's, I know there's summer school graduation that we're gonna probably have in July, so want to look at that as well, and that's basically it, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rozas Medina. Dr. Barbara Flores.
I just want to say that I thoroughly enjoyed attending the graduations, it was really wonderful, 620 kids graduated from Arroyo, that was incredible, and everybody was joyous, it was, it was heartwarming, we went, Ms. Abios and I were together at 2, at 2 of them, at Arroyo and also at San Andreas, and we really, I mean, we really loved it, I could tell, kids were happy, families were happy. I have one, I have one recommendation, and I hope Dr. Rodriguez can add to it, but at one particular graduation, I was really kind of disturbed, because the Latino kids were asked to take their sashes off, and I, I, we couldn't, we couldn't act fast enough, and so we were really upset, and that's not right, it's not right, and so, poor Dr. Rodriguez was the closest to me, so I complained, but then she had a great suggestion, could you share the suggestion, Dr. Rodriguez?
Thank you, Dr. Flores, we'd like to start a new tradition in the district, where we have a multicultural celebration, where we're able to honor all of our students, you know, once a year, maybe at the Glenn Helen venue, where you can see, you know, thousands of people, and we can have, for our Pacific Islanders, African-Americans, Latinos, anyone who's interested in just being proactive around diversity, LGBTQ, and so I found the format from University of Laverne, they do something very similar, and so that way we're uniting the groups together, and we can celebrate differences together.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Flores. Vice President Tillman?
I think a similar solution to the hats and the sashes is a Board policy, when you don't have a policy, then that vacancy leads to sites doing their own thing, so we can be real specific about the policy in terms of the hats, caps, as long as they're, don't have any profane language on it, that you can do hats, same thing with the sashes, so, we don't, I know we don't have a specific policy, but I know there's consensus, so some, wherever area it is, should present the policy to us, and for the first and second reading, and that way, district-wide, we'll know what it is, alright? And I know the staff has heard what the Board's idea is in terms of allowing it, so I don't see a problem happening. I do want to say that the graduations I attended were wonderful, they did an article in the Sun about the valedictorian and salutatorians, I think we need more and more of those stories, because when I sit and listen to all the different schools that our students are going to, and you hear the students talk about the stereotypes that are associated with themselves, being from San Bernardino, they're almost invisible, these thousands and thousands of kids who are going on to do great things, a number of them are going to the Armed Forces, and every college you can name, so, we need to do more to promote that, I know in the past, we did some full-page ads in the Sun newspaper, I think we should do more in social media, and it's not too late, because we know the colleges they went to, I think we should promote that, because they put in the work, and the community needs to know how well we are doing. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Vice President Tillman. Ms. Abios?
Thank you, and I also want to congratulate all of the graduates as well, it was really nice, this would have, this was my second year celebrating, last year I had the ability to also do it in person, so it was really nice, and I was really excited to come back. I do want to take time, though, to address, on a different note, to address some of the Board comments that Ms. Medina made about myself, or my person, about, you know, being a liar, I don't appreciate being called a liar, so I do feel the need to kind of address that here today. Specifically, I want to address the part where she said inaccurate information or insinuations were being made, also, she had stated that, you know, she was very upset at Board members like Ms. Abios saying things that they should not be saying, and blatantly lying. I didn't say anything that I wasn't allowed to say, as, you know, Dr. Wyatt had mentioned at that Board meeting, he did consult with legal, there's no ground violations made by me. So, at the last Board meeting dated 5/17, at 3 hours and 40 minutes was when this was made, these comments by Ms. Medina were made. The truth of the matter is, the Superintendent shared with everyone that he would be retiring at the May 3rd Board meeting. I was under the impression that we Board members were going to be voting on something that night, in public, related to the Superintendent and his so-called retirement. I later found out that same day, May 1st, that we would not be holding a public vote. In fact, we didn't even have to say anything as Board members, if we didn't want to, and as you all saw, many of us didn't. As a matter of fact, it was advised that we, that it was in the best interest of the district, or of the institution, that we didn't say anything. That is when I had an issue, I had an issue with that portion of it, and I was upset at that portion of it. I became extremely upset because we cannot, in my words, have our cake and eat it too. What I do mean by that is, I understand that this is a democracy and majority rules, however, we need to be transparent with the public about our process, that's my complaint, and let the community know what each and every one of us Board members are doing when it comes to the votes and the decisions we make, because yes, we are Board, we are a Board, but we are also each elected individually and are responsible and accountable to the community and our constituents. In order for the community to be able to make an educated vote on whether or not an elected official continues to serve in their best interest and their children's, they need to know where we individually stand with our decisions, in order to continue to vote us into office or not. That is democracy, and that is integrity, that is what I stand for, I am okay if the things that I bring up don't move forward, as long as the things are open, transparent, and fair. So, because I learned that May, so because I learned on May 3rd that we would not be having a public vote that night on anything related to the Superintendent retirement announcement, I felt it was my duty and obligation to speak and share the truth, or at least my truth, along with my frustrations on what and how the Board was handling this situation. I am glad I did so, because as you all saw, some of us completely ignored the comment or the statement made. And we moved right along with business as usual. How completely disrespectful to the community, not to me, not to the Superintendent. How do you drop a bomb like that on your parents, teachers, stakeholders, and your entire community, and just move right along with business as usual? We have some serious problems if this is how we have been operating. Now, let me quickly clarify my comment of this being a forced retirement, because I do not appreciate being called a liar. Nobody drags their family 160 miles and enrolls their children into our schools in San Bernardino to take a job for 3 years, to say a year later, hey, by the way, I'm retiring. Who does that? In my opinion, only someone so completely frustrated and demoralized at the realization that they will not be able to move any work forward without extreme opposition at every turn, and I have more, but my time is up. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Abios, and I'm not gonna have comments on Board comments, so, I'll move on to mine. Alrighty, folks, first of all, thank you to the Board members that did bring up the graduation regalia concerns, I definitely am in agreement with them, I saw some absolutely amazing caps that kids designed, I'll be honest with you, that I couldn't design ever, unless somebody made it for me. Some of those were also made as art projects and art classes that I learned, oh yeah, they were, so they took not just a great pride in it, but great time and creativity with our teaching staff, so I thought that was pretty cool, that, you know, our teachers, you know, celebrated the event even more by working with them as a project, and so they didn't just think about that overnight, it took some time and creativity. You know, the sashes issue in regards to our cultural regalia has been brought up, and that was very disconcerting to me, that that did happen, it was very noticeable, so, you know, I'm glad that that's come up, and we have a plan, Dr. Rodriguez, I appreciate that. You know, I do want to say congratulations to all the candidates who ran for office today, you know, especially those who received a 50-plus 1% vote tonight, you know, congratulations to them, because every one of us up here knows how much work it takes, and what kind of courage it is, and public ridicule as well, and embarrassment, and all the other things that come along with it that aren't so great, long hours as well, and hard work, and also the toll it takes on your family as well, it's a lot more than people, I think, ever bargained for, or think before they get into it, and so, you know, my hat's off to all of them, for one, trying to get into office, and as Ms. Abios said, do the right thing, you know, serve our public as well, because it is important that we do that. Graduations, man, they were fantastic, that's all I could say, you know, I'll just speak of a couple ones that were really neat to me, Anderson, for those of you who are familiar with the Anderson School and their graduation, my hat's off to the Anderson staff, wow, you guys had an amazing graduation ceremony, and how special it was for our kids, that was just an amazing celebration, not that the others weren't, but familiar with our Anderson program, that was really, really neat. All the graduations were fun, and the one thing I did notice was the level of energy and enthusiasm of our students and staff, it was great, I mean, some kids were a little over the top on their enthusiasm, you know, we had some stunts that took place, and some acrobatics, but thank God, nobody got hurt, for those of you that were there, but no, it was just a wonderful celebration, thank you to Valley College as well, for what they've done for us over there, and, you know, allowing us to use their facility, it's a wonderful facility. Couple things, because I want to make sure I get in between my time, I was, ask this to be quick, and I'm on the second log, it's now. I'd like us to request 700 training, Form 700 training for us as a Board, I think it's important that we go through that, and get that done, and then, also, you know, on our interim Superintendent process, we didn't get a chance to talk about that too much this evening, but I need to find out what you want to do for questions, if there's gonna be questions for interview that we develop as a Board, or if we have them pre-formulated, and then if we want to have a special Board meeting for that evening as well, or afternoon, and I believe that is it for my Board comments, but let me just double check.
Did you give Mr. Tillman, you kept his copy?
Oh, and thank you, Dr. Daddy Rogers, for reminding me to give Mr. Tillman, Vice President Tillman, some more homework that he can have, but no, Dr. Daddy Rogers and I both went up to Sacramento as part of the CSBA State Delegate Assembly, and we're able to learn a lot up there, and also do a lot of advocating for, you know, our schools, our students, and our community throughout our state, which was my first time, and it was quite a process, for those of you that think we just went up there to hang out, it started like at 7:30 in the morning, I think we ended probably close to 10 o'clock at night, so it was not a short day, it was a long day in the evening, and next day was more of the same, but a lot of hard work that's happening, and just good governance as well, I'll say, they only get a 1 minute for public comment, just so, you know, I want to throw that in there, 1 minute for public comment, I would've used 4 people's time already, so, I'll end on that, thank you. Oh, and I thought I was done. We'll move on to 10.2, Superintendent and Staff.
I have a quick report, and then I'm going to turn it over to one of our staff members to give their quick report as well. It'll be, so really quickly, I just wanted to comment really quickly. I know Ms. Reti, Ms. Sabios mentioned about my retirement, and I know there's been a lot of questions and speculation around that. And I want to bring some good clarity to it that, you know, when I came here to the district, the goal was to obviously take the district, as we've talked about before, to the highest level of the next, of excellence. And, and I want to reiterate what I've said in the past. We talked about doing the Listening and Learning Tour, where I got a lot of great feedback from staff, students, parents, community members, board members. And at the end of that Listening and Learning Tour, you know, culminated with our Framework for Excellence. And if you look at the Framework for Excellence, which I know throughout the state, a large number of other districts have looked at it, it's an excellent plan. It will take the district to the highest level of excellence. But we know that during that time, the board did not give us the, the green light in a sense to move forward. I know they asked for more additional information, even though we got a lot of information, and that was fine. That was the board's decision, and that is within the board's jurisdiction. And so there was not a decision, a 6-0 vote to move forward with it. And therefore, it was very evident at that point that my presence as superintendent is, is going to, is going to impact the district's ability to move the work, because obviously, there was another educational, you know, our educational philosophies did not align, and that's okay. And I said that at the last board meeting. It's okay that they don't align. If they felt like my presence, you know, if we're not going to get 6-0 and we're not going to be aligned to do what's in the best interest of kids, then, you know, obviously, retirement is, is the best next step to go, because this is my third, almost my 30th year working in education. And I would say that I've enjoyed my career and I've done a lot of good things for kids. And my career is never over, I guess. It's never over until it's over. But I do know that there's always those out there who may need my services, who knows. But with that, I want to end before I turn it over to my colleague who's got his comments, that I will end by saying that I will continue, regardless of where I go from here, is be at the highest level of excellence. I will continue to make, I will always do that. And everyone who knows me throughout my entire career, you saw evidence that on October 5 that I am always at the highest level of excellence. And, and I will continue to do that. No one's going to, to change that. Secondly, I do have high expectations. And I encourage this board, as they go forward, to be at the highest level of excellence, but I also encourage them to have high expectations, mainly for kids, because kids can't wait for us to, to make decisions. We got to make decisions good for kids, and they can't wait, because the kid who's a kinder is going to be gone if we don't make a decision quickly. This is a sense of urgency. We have, the data clearly shows that we're in a sense of urgency. Thirdly, you know, I've talked about this, we are educational ambassadors regardless, and our actions, attitude, behaviors, and belief must reflect our commitment to kids. And when that, when our actions, attitude, behaviors, and belief reflects what we do for kids, the results reflect that. You know, we know high-performing districts focus on that, and that's why they're high performing. And then the last piece is, you know, I do make decisions in the best interest of kids. I don't make the best, I don't make decisions for adults. I make decisions in the best interest of kids, and therefore, those conversations with adults should be, you know, you know, toward, are we making decisions good for kids? And those conversations should be reflective of that. So with that, I appreciate the, the support of those board members who have been supportive. And, and again, I, I think as the board goes forward, I think this is going to be important, they find someone who's aligned with their educational philosophy, but most importantly, who's going to make decisions in the best interest of kids, and that's going to be important. But with that, I'll turn my comment over to Dr. Escavell.
Thank you, Superintendent Irvin. Dr. Escavell.
Thank you, Superintendent Irvin. Good evening, Board President Dr. Wyatt, Vice President Mr. Tillman, and Board, Cabinet, and SBCUSD community. I have a lot of gratitude in my heart this evening. I want to begin by thanking Superintendent Irvin for the opportunity to join our dynamic, a dynamic team of educational leaders and educators across SBCUSD, particularly to lead a brand-new division anchored on enhancing and promoting equity, access, and innovation in everything we do. To our board members, thank you for providing me the opportunity to work with so many wonderful people that I have come to value in SBCUSD, and the opportunity to focus on enhancing A through G outcomes for students, which is work so close to my heart. Superintendent Irvin and Board, your support has helped cast a vision that unapologetically ensures scholars, families, and faculty can feel seen, heard, and most importantly, valued, all while embracing their unique identity, background, and ability as a fundamental way we will affirm and achieve equity. While my tenure here will be brief, the work focused on bringing together great minds, working across divisions, and partnering with school sites, which has resulted in establishing the College and Career Cadre, the District Office College and Career Team, who have together finalized a three-year college and career roadmap, are examples of how collaboration has been at the heart of college and career success here at SBCUSD. Working alongside you in securing the next generation of graduates who graduate with optimal choice and preparation toward college and career has been my honor and privilege. I want to thank my fellow cabinet members, management, labor partners, parents, certificated teachers, and classified support staff across the district and across our 72 campuses for your gracious welcome and thoughtful work this year. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Escavell. And I just want to say, you know, thank you on a whole different level. You were, have been a wonderful addition to our San Francisco Unified School District family and community. I'll tell you what, I always say, anyone that I see at as many events as I'm at is giving me a run for my money, and that's a lot of events. And Dr. Escavell, you were at almost as many events as I could count, and I imagine you were at many more. So your level of dedication to our students and our community is definitely second to none. And I imagine that's why you've gotten another great opportunity to continue your level of excellence and hard work and dedication you do for our kids and community. And I think they're very fortunate, whichever endeavor you're moving on to next in district, they're very fortunate to have you as a leader and as a colleague as well. Thank you.
Dr. Wyatt, if I could just say, I want to say to you, thank you so much for bringing your talent, skills, abilities. You have been impactful in, in a short time. I know connecting with a community college and, and others that, that you just jumped right in and began to show us how or what could be done in an area that everyone across the country is looking to embed in their practices. And so you will be missed, and I send best wishes along with you and your, in your journey, and may God bless you.
Dr. Escavell, I want to also thank you and show my appreciation for all of your leadership and your expertise. And lots of people would tell me how great you were and that they really appreciated all, all that you did for them. And just wish you the best in your next endeavor.
And I just want to add, I mean, I heard Doc, but are you going to be at the next meeting? Or no? Where we, I don't know what date it is anymore. I mean, I heard what you said, but I don't want to just overlook if this is, yes, you'll be at the next meeting, right? 21st? Correct? Okay, so I'll reserve, I'll reserve my speech. Never mind.
I'm not here. I'm, I'm sure you can still make the statement for me.
Ms. Sabios.
I just also want to say, Dr. Escavell, thank you so much. Again, it was, it was brief, but I know that you, your heart was in the right place. And, you know, you've, even in the short amount of time, just getting us to get aligned with the four-year plans for high school students, I really appreciate that. And so, again, I'm very sad to see another, another one leave us. But I'm sure that you will bring great things to wherever it is you're going. And, you know, best of, best of luck, not that you needed.
Thank you, Ms. Sabios, and I appreciate that gentleman in every way as well. So. All righty, folks. 11.0 Actionives, 11.1 Approval Personnel Report Number 21, dated June 7, 2022, which contains action says hiring, retirements, resignations, promotions, and terminations.
As presented, vote.
Second.
It's moved by Vice President Tillman, seconded by, I believe, Dr. Daddy Rogers, or was that Ms. Rosales Medina? Ms. Rosales Medina. Thank you. Discussion? All right, let's go ahead and vote. All right, motion carries. 11.2 Approval of Education Protection Account Spending Plan Fiscal Year 2022 through 2023.
Vote.
Second.
It's moved by Vice President Tillman, seconded by Dr. Flores. Any discussion? All right, let's vote. All right, motion carries. 11.3 Approval Resolution or Request for Allowance of Attendants of Emergency Conditions in Ian Springs High School.
Vote.
Second.
It's been moved by Vice President Tillman, seconded by Dr. Daddy Rogers. Any discussion? Let's vote. All right, motion carries. Let's move on to 11.4 Approval Resolution Number One Designate Specific Materials, Products, Things, or Services Pursuant to Public Contract Code Section 3400.
Vote.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. Any discussion? All right, let's vote. Okay, motion carries. 11.5 Approval of the Modification of Master Plan for Multilingual Programs.
Vote.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. Any discussion? All right, let's vote. Okay, motion carries. 11.6 Approval of Temporary Borrowing Between Funds of the School District for Fiscal Year 2022 through 2023.
Vote.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. Any discussion? All right, let's vote. All right, motion carries. 12.0 Consent Items, 12.1 Approval Consent Items.
Vote.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. Any items to be pulled? All righty, well, let's go ahead and vote on the consent agenda. Consent Items, excuse me. Requested. Ms. Ginger Ontobetos.
Good evening. Thank you, Board. I'm happy to share the questions or requests that you made this evening. The first one was with Dr. Barbara Flores sharing the, the book Opal Lee and What It Means to Be Free: The True Story of the Grandmother of Juneteenth. She encouraged us to ensure that these were in our school libraries for our kids. Ms. Gwen, sorry, Dr. Gwen Rogers and Ms. Abigail Rosales Medina then asked that we would provide resources and participate in community Juneteenth events. Dr. Gwen Rogers asked that we would increase awareness about opportunities for students to participate in student leadership as well as wellness center planning teams. Ms. Myra Sabios reminded us of the request to have student board members and specifically encouraged us to consider the idea of having one assigned for each board member as a mentor kind of relationship as well. Dr. Gwen Rogers requested support for two bills that are going through the state. One is AB 2774, if I got that number right, which would add African-American students as a special group for the LCAP process. And then AB 2933, which would mandate funding for transportation in, in our districts. Ms. Abigail Rosales Medina asked that we would provide an update regarding the rules around the grad cap decorations for each school and consider a district standard that would be enforced district-wide. Dr. Barbara Flores recommended the, echoed basically the idea that Dr. Rodriguez had about a single multicultural graduation event. Mr. Danny Tillman asked that we would consider establishing, or that you would consider establishing a board policy to provide guidance around the decoration of grad caps and the wearing of sashes and other regalia for graduations. Mr. Danny Tillman asked that we would increase promotion of student successes, including our valedictorians and salutatorians, and he remembered the ads that we used to do in the newspaper. Dr. Scott Wyatt asked that the board would engage in training or that we would coordinate some training for Form 700 for our board members. And Dr. Scott Wyatt also asked that the board would provide him some input on the interim superintendent search question, special meeting, those kinds of things might be considered. So those were all of the requests that I received tonight. If there's any others, please do let me know.
Thank you, Ms. Ontobetos. Was there any questions, concerns on that? All righty. 14.0, 14.1.
Vote to adjourn.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. Everyone have a great evening. Thank you again for all that you do, and staff especially for being patient with us. Good night, and God bless.